...will respect that Mayor Rosansky and Council members Daigle and Curry are not present in the office.
Councilman Curry is coming back from Washington DC. He hopes to be here by the closing session.
Okay. Clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilman Vardan?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Marianne. May I have none? We'll go right into the runoff reduction program, water-based irrigation controllers, and irrigation and landscape ordinance. Bob Stein is going to provide this as an example.
If he gets cooperation from the audiovisual room.
While this is warming up, I'll just mention that in October 2004, staff made a presentation to council during study session to talk about the Newport Coast watershed management program. And one of the goals of that program is to reduce the large dry weather flows we have in the coastal canyons. So this presentation is going to focus on one of the measures that staff is now implementing in order to see if we can reduce those large dry weather flows. Could we dim those lights a little bit, please?
This initial frame shows the beach at Little Corona, which is the mouth of Buck
Gully. And we have a large dry weather flow coming down Buck Gully at 17 million gallons per month. And you can see the flow as outlets across the beach into the sensitive rocky intertidal Two years ago, when we started the watershed management program, we thought that the over irrigation that we see here from poorly maintained irrigation systems was the cause of this large dry weather runoff entering the catch basins into the storm drains and exiting into the canyons. However, we found out it's a little more complicated. We commissioned consultant Todd Engineers to do a study, and they found that the importation of water into Newport Coast, which is equal to the total annual rainfall that falls onto Newport Coast, the resulting landscape irrigation has caused the groundwater to increase from 30 to 40 feet, as shown in this diagram. The result being that this water then leaches out into the canyons, and that's why we've been seeing this steadily increasing flows in Buck Gully and the other canyons. One of the results is that all this water that flows into the canyons with the pesticides and fertilizers is creating this jungle in our desert canyons. This is Buck Gully around Fifth Avenue. This is our famous Buck Gully waterfall in lower Buck Gully, and this runs day in, day out, all year long, just from the dry weather flows.
So Bob, you're saying it isn't surface runoff, it's subsurface runoff?
That's correct.
But to clarify, that comes from over irrigation over a long period of time?
That's correct. If you walked down that canyon, you wouldn't see water rolling down the hillsides or coming out of the storm drains except at a couple of locations. It's actually exfiltrating at the creek level. So if you walked from the top of the canyon down to the bottom, you would see a steadily increasing amount of water without any apparent sources. So what we're doing now is kind of a phased approach to work with the community to see how we can reduce these dry weather flows. So we've already done point number one, which is a source identification. Now we're moving to point number two, which is encouraging the property owners to install these weather-based evaporation, evapotranspiration controllers. And we are also working on items three, four, five, and six. And at the end of the presentation, I'll spend a couple of minutes talking about the draft city ordinances that we are working on. In this photo here, this is Buck Gully, which is the most urbanized of all our canyons. And so we have focused our program to try to talk to the owners within the watershed to try to encourage them to install these high-tech smart timer controllers. And this is the first program of its kind that I'm aware of in the state where we're doing a kind of a massive marketing attempt to encourage people to sign up for our rebate program. And the goal is to try to get enough people to install these so that we can actually see results, not just the individual homeowners showing a reduction in water, but also that we can measure lower flows coming out of the canyon. And we're particularly focused on Pelican Hill, which we know from water usage records are very high users and perhaps account for 5% of the flow within Buck Gully. We've met with the homeowners association. They've been very receptive and cooperative. They are in the process of installing controllers and working with us to monitor flows. So we expect in a year, we're going to be able to show some quantitative positive results that we'll be able then to use as a marketing effort for the other associations in the You have some of these photos in your package. These are three controllers that use similar software. This is marketed by Irritrol, by Toro, and by Hydropoint. And the way these things work is they factor in different parameters such as weather, the amount of sunlight the property receives, the plant types, soil conditions, the soil slope, and it calculates the amount of water that's appropriate for the particular plant type, in the theory being that if you have the optimum amount of water, the plant's going to be healthy. If you underwater it or overwater it, it's not going to thrive. So we have two parts to our program. One is this intensive marketing element. The other is a quality control element because if we're installing 500 to 600 of these controllers, we want to make sure we don't have 500 to 600 phone calls coming into the city hall complaining that their landscaping is dying. So it's kind of a new thing for the city to get into this kind of high production. The first element, the marketing, we've been successful. We've done more than the flyers. We've done some advertising in the papers. We've gotten some good press from the Register and the Times and some of the local television networks. We've talked to the associations, to the boards and memberships, and gotten very good feedback from these folks. And today, we have hundreds and hundreds of people calling in. We have over 250 reservations, and I believe 185 controllers have been installed. So the marketing effort is getting out there, and people seem to be very enthusiastic about the program. The other part of the program is the quality control.
Bob, how does your program differ from the Irvine Ranch Water District program that started several years ago?
They did some pilot studies that were focused on the common areas, and then they did some tests to show that there were significant reductions in water usage. We're focusing on the residences.
I thought they had a residential program, too.
Tom, you want to correct me on this?
The county-wide program rebates for residents.
So the difference is that we have an effective program because we are signing up people at a much faster pace than the rest of the county combined, it seems like. And so we're kind of grabbing the majority of the controller rebates from MODOC. And Kevin Hunt from MODOC is saying the city's doing it the way it needs to be done. We focus on associations and get the enthusiasm, get the whole association to sign up. So I think that we're on the right track here. The other part of the program is the quality control, and we've worked with IRWD and Municipal Water District of Orange County to come up with a process where we have people call in, they get pre-qualified, we reserve a controller for them, and then we schedule a site visit. The installer comes out, verifies that their irrigation system is in good enough condition to warrant a controller. The controller's installed, it's programmed. A precipitation test is made at each valve to verify that each of the areas is getting sufficient water. And then there's a follow-up visit by a third party four to six weeks later to confirm everything's working and that the final paperwork for the rebate is filled in at that time and submitted to MODOC. And then we have a two-year service warranty so that if someone has a concern, they call up Hydropoint, they come out, they make some adjustments as necessary. So we're heavy into the process now. To date, I haven't been hearing any complaints. There have been some phone calls, and we've gone out there and made some adjustments. Actually, what seems to be happening is that the landscapers come in and they turn off the controllers because they don't think the plants are getting enough water, and then the whole system gets defeated, so we have to go back out there and reprogram it.
Question for you, Bob. It's my understanding that this particular commercial product is the only one that's been certified by the state or whoever certifies it. Is that correct?
Okay. I have to be careful because I think there are five products that have received a certification by the landscaping industry, but one has been tested successfully, I believe, by MWD. That's the one we're using, and that shows that it has, accomplishes what it says it does, that it reduces water consumption.
Okay. My question is, are residents been given a range of choices, or are they saying you just have to go with this one vendor, this one product?
In this case, we are going with a single vendor, and the rationale is that this technology requires a daily report on the weather conditions. And so we have these people hooked up to Hydropoint, and so they're getting the same consistent weather information. We get into a complication if we have several different vendors and several different weather forecasts going on. We may run into some kind of coordination problem, and it's a complication that I'm not quite ready to tackle. So we're trying to keep things as simple as possible. The way I envisioned this is that successive phases will be more open to looking at some of the other products, but we need to somehow look at how that's going to work for our total Newport Coast area.
Well, is MWD subsidizing these units, or that's all that they would approve?
MODOC has a grant, and I'm trying to remember if it's from MWD or from the Bureau of Reclamation, that sponsors the rebate program. And so, and Tom Ash may have to come and bail me out on this, but that's my understanding, that MODOC has a grant fund that's sponsoring the rebate program. We have another grant from the US Bureau of Reclamation, which is also subsidizing the program. IRWD is also chipping in some of their funds to help buy the controllers.
Bob, how much more maintenance does it take on your irrigation system if you have this than if you just have a normal system?
I have a normal system, and it doesn't work, so...
Well, that's what most of them don't work, at least the way they were designed.
My feeling is we're going to have to watch these systems carefully to make sure that they're performing the way they're marketed. There isn't a large experience with these kinds of efforts, and so I'm a little concerned, and that's why we have this verification process and this two-year warranty to make sure that the systems are actually delivering the water as they're marketed.
The people that I've talked to, we had a meeting last night with the airport working, Newport Coast Advisory Group, and two of the board members have the systems, and we're very enthusiastic about it. And I just got an email out of no place from another man in Cronedale Mar who's installed his and is also very enthusiastic, saying that it's just what we had hoped. His yard looks better, and he's saved money, and it doesn't seem to be a problem in terms of effort on his part.
And what we should be able to show is that we've also asked Hydropoint to monitor water usage. So in six months, we'll be able to show pre-ET controller, post-ET controller, are they saving the 20% to 40%, and also, how's our landscaping doing? My feeling is that we had a Mediterranean palette out in Newport Coast, and it seems like they don't need as much water as going into these lots. Some of these lots in Newport, Pelican Hill, are using 10 times as much water as a normal user would use. I talked about the flow verification process. Right now, we're using our code and water quality enforcement folks to help with the flow verification. This is Shane Berkeley, along with Tom Ash from Hydropoint, doing one of those verification tests. And this is just kind of a before and after picture. The after picture is up here. You can see the grass looking pretty healthy. If you look carefully here, there's lots of brown spots and stuff. And my understanding is that there is a drop in water usage at this property. Two problems have cropped up. One is that in the pre-annex area of Newport Beach, we've been getting calls from people not in the target areas. We've had to put them on a wait list until funds become available. And so that's caused a little bit of stress for some of these property owners that want to participate in the program, but our focus is Buck Gully and Newport Coast. The other problem is in this area, that would be to the south of Buck Gully, and this is Buck Gully right in here. This is the Crystal Cove development, and this is Los Trancos Canyon, and this is Muddy Creek that winds through here. Both of these have dry weather flows that are diverted to the trunk sewer and coast highway that's owned by Orange County Sand District. Here's the Crystal Cove Commercial Center, Los Trancos, and Muddy Creek, and the yellow triangles are where the water is diverted into the trunk sewer. This is the concern, that in less than two years, the dry weather flows have increased eightfold to nearly 8 million gallons per month. The pump capacities for these diversions is 8.7 million gallons per month, 200 gallons per minute. So IRWD is forecasting that by the summer of 2007, this year, they will exceed the capacity of the pumps, and so we'll be in a situation where either the sand districts will say turn off the diversion because the flows are too excessive, or it'll just exceed the capacity of the pumps, and the flows will flow to the beaches at Crystal Cove. Why is that a concern? The state has issued some warning salvos, saying that they're going to start regulating flows to the sensitive marine life areas and may condition the water quality coming out of the canyons. And if we're responsible for those flows, then we may be in a situation having to fund water quality efforts for those canyons.
Isn't that the responsibility of the developer of Crystal Cove to take care of that? I mean, why is it our responsibility to solve that problem?
We've met with the county, and we're not able to come to any agreement on how this problem can be solved. They...
Have you met with the Irvine Company?
We...Dick Diamond from IRWD has volunteered to first talk to SAT, but that hasn't happened yet.
It seems like to me that we should be, there should be a requirement by the county to install these type of facilities, assuming they're proven, in all new connections. And IRWD is the one that's controlling that because it's their system. Why aren't they requiring it?
That was my line of logic. It didn't fly with the county. They're not requiring the smart timer controllers. It's not conditioned in the building permits. They're not requiring good landscaping practices. They're not requiring high-tech irrigation systems. And they're saying that because all the building permits have been issued, they can't go back and put new conditions on those permits. So at this point, I don't have a satisfactory answer to your comment.
I'm unclear, are there left to go? I mean, what's the percentage of permits that have been issued versus what's left to be issued?
It sounds like it's greater than 90%.
90% issued.
Yeah.
I'm unclear why the city, why are we involved ourselves with that? Wouldn't it be more of a problem to be resolved between Irvine Company and the county and IRWD? I mean, why are we having negotiations or conversations with the county about it?
It's the odd situation that Newport Coast is being developed in that all the permits and development are being run through the county, and then once the certificate of occupancy is issued, then the tracks revert to the city of Newport Beach. So in a way, we're in a very bad situation in that we're going to potentially accept the liability and have no control of what's actually occurring on Newport Coast. I'm not saying that the county's acting in bad faith, but you look at their water quality management plans, and they're not really very rigorous.
Okay. I guess my concern is we'd be stepping into an enforcement situation that maybe we don't need to be involved with. I don't know, maybe Dave can explain it a little bit more.
Councilmember Daigle, that's a good thought. For us as city staff, we, as the city, receive the letters from the State Water Board as to regulations on these areas of special biological significance. The other entity that received the letter was the Pelican Point Community Association, but basically, we're on the hook because of that letter to do something within our jurisdiction, even though the county is entitling and planning that area.
Okay. Now, as far as the ASBS issue, Dave, do you think at some point we could maybe revisit that in terms of what our community's response might be to that letter and to their position?
I think so, and that's sort of where Bob Stein and his, the grants have been going to try and prove to the state board that there isn't a significant negative impact associated with a lot of the activities there, but we at least have to keep looking and walking down the path on some of these activities. The comment made by Mayor Potem Solich about working with the county, I do think we do have an opportunity now with the new supervisor, Pat Bates, in office, to go to her and let her know of this problem and see what she can do, rather than working up through the county bureaucracy. We could start with the supervisors' level.
Well, it just doesn't make sense to me. It's like holding us responsible for all the flow out of the Santa Ana River just because we're at the end of the pipe.
That's right.
I don't understand why the Irvine Company, who has been a partner in all of these activities, is even allowing its developers to not follow some sort of rule or regulation like this. And I think that we haven't exhausted all of our possibilities as far as getting these installed initially. I just don't understand why it should be a retrofit. It seems like to me it should be a mandated installation to start with.
I think so, too, and we should work on that, both with the company and with the supervisor.
It sounds like the horse is out of the barn. If 90% of the permits have been issued, I don't know how...
But as long as the stuff hasn't been installed, I don't see that you can give up.
I guess my question is to the city attorney. I mean, to me, this sounds like an issue with regard to the annexation agreement and what our agreements were with the county as far as what liabilities we were assuming when we were taking over those areas when we annexed them. I mean, I understand Councilman Solich's example that we're at the end of the pipe, but the pipe's in our city. It's not like it's coming from Irvine or Tustin or wherever. I mean, these homes are now in our city, and I don't, I mean, this may be something that you can see if the annexation agreement addresses as to who bears liability for these types of, for the actions that were taken by the county that now are impacting our city because we pre-agreed to take these areas into our city.
We did, and we pre-agreed to take them in after they were developed, according to all the development standards that were established by the county approvals. So I think what's happened is that the study just recently confirmed and identified the runoff from that development as seeping in, raising the water table, creating all these water issues. We are held responsible for what goes on once we inherit it, but until we inherit those areas, I think that it's going to be incumbent upon us to work with the Irvine Company and with the county to see if we can't get them to start being proactive to some extent instead of throwing up their hands and saying they can't require it now.
How much does one of these controllers cost?
I believe the controller's about $500 to $600.
So we're talking about a $500 to $600 expenditure on a $2 million house? Give me a break.
Well, I mean, I find it hard to believe that these homes, when they're designed, I assume they're bringing in landscape architects and things like that, that they're not already putting in state-of-the-art systems. I mean, I believe they're just putting in the Rainbird controller where you put the little knobs, and that's the end of it. I mean, that would be...
It's just a matter of being able to convince the county and the Irvine Company to convince the county to require it. And my guess is that the Irvine Company has already entered into contracts for these projects to be developed, and so they're maybe, depending upon what control they have over contracts with the developers...
Well, the Irvine Company's not building these homes, I don't think.
No, that's what I'm saying, that they've already entered into contracts.
They're selling lots off, either custom lots to a custom builder, or I don't know exactly how all the homes are being built up there, or small tracts to companies that are developing them. So it's not even, I mean, I guess when the Irvine Company sells them, they may be able to make some requirement.
This is a little hypocritical because the city itself, we do not require anything of people who are building now. So I mean, for us to be pointing the finger and saying, well, the Irvine Company, yeah, they should be, but the city hasn't exactly been at the forefront of requiring that from development that's going on.
Well, it's certainly a good point. And I think I've mentioned in previous meetings, although it's my bad that I've never followed up on it, but personally, I think a system like this should at some point be mandatory throughout the city, and that we need to see or look into a program where either we're going to make it mandatory within five years or whatever, or a program where the city will pay for it through a $2 charge in your utility bill. I mean, I got to believe if you're going to drop your water usage 20% to 40%, that if you pay $2 extra a month to get a controller, it's going to save you a lot more than $2 a month on a water bill. Plus, we're buying very expensive water, I think, to, you know, we pump some of our own in Fountain Valley, but I believe we buy a lot of water, and it's expensive water, and it's not going to get any cheaper as time goes forward. So there's a lot of savings, not only with the water bill, but with our sewer system where we're having these increased flows. And so that, I mean, it's really something that we do need to take a comprehensive look at, and maybe our Coast and Bay Water Quality Commission, which Nancy's going to be the chairman of it by the end of the meeting, will take that up this year.
Well, I think, though, as we'll get into later, when you go from education and incentives, which we're doing, which is great, and I've also gotten positive feedback from the smart controller program, you know, people are excited, wow, I can get a free controller and that kind of thing. But when you go from education and incentives into an ordinance, I mean, that's a real shift. In ordinances, you're talking penalties, citations to residents, fines, and so on. And so I think you have to look at that from several different ways. First is the kinds of interactions that we have with our residents. You know, and having walked and visited many homes last fall, people take great pride in their landscaping, and all of a sudden, the government's saying, well, you can't plant rose bushes, you've got to plant cactuses. You know, so you're going to have some issues there. And then secondly, if you look at the whole cost structure of introducing an ordinance where you now have an enforcement regime and all of that, you have people to issue citations, you have vehicles, and so on and so forth. So there's really a lot of things to be considered when you go from education incentive and shifting into an ordinance.
One of the differences between this and the rest of the city is that this is a new area that's developing and should be dealing with the state-of-the-art stuff, where the rest of the city, that's retrofit. It's already been that way, but this is stuff that's coming online right now and that we're having to assume this liability.
That's true, but we also have water flows that are going into the Santa Ana River, into the ocean, into the bay, that are all in violation in a lot of places. It's not just in Buck Gully or...
I know, but right here, we're talking about Los Trancos and Muddy Creek.
I know, but I know in West Newport, we have issues with dry water, dry weather flows into the Santa Ana River that I believe we're already received letters from the county, I mean, the state. You know, and even just from a water quality standpoint, even to that extent, that we're... I mean, I go up into Benita Canyon, this is my sister up there, and the streets are literally green. The gutter is green because there's slime growing in the streets, and because the water is constantly flowing through that. And that area's been developed for many years now. And I, you know, I go into West Newport. Now, where I live, there's not a lot of landscaping. I don't see a lot of runoff, but there is some. And, you know, I think many areas could probably benefit. I mean, we're addressing this area tonight. I'm just saying in the future, as Nancy pointed out, it is a problem, not just here, but all throughout the city. And, you know, I'm not saying to be punitive to our residents, but, you know, that's certainly an issue we could look at. Maybe it's a matter of if you install a low-flow or a device that regulates the flow, you get cheaper water than the guy that just wants to throw it down the street.
Okay, that's good. That's incentive.
We've talked about tiered rates. I'm not just saying, we're only at a plan here. I'm just saying that something needs to be studied, and a lot of areas in town probably could benefit from this type of assistance.
My question was on the liability aspect of this thing. The rest of the city's been developed for years, and there's no one to go back for on the liability. This is a new project, and looking at, you know, the county and the... This is a new project, and looking at, you know, the county and the Irvine Company to help share the liability here, that's my concern.
I think the area of concern that I would have in being able to get them to do that is that the city, the agreement that the city entered into was that the Irvine Company and whoever they sold to would be able to pull their permits and develop according to that development agreement, and that we didn't have any ability to require anything addition, and that that's been going on since 2000. So, everything that's been going on, and I know that in a lot of respects, there's a lot of area there left to be built, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't make an effort to try and persuade both the county and the Irvine Company to work with the residents to encourage and to try and, you know, get it done right the first time. But I don't think that the city's in a position legally to try and force anybody or require anybody to do it. But I think highlighting it, telling them how important it is, the lower cost, working with them in that respect, I think we're going to maybe be able to have some success. The liability is that, just like anywhere else in the city, we get the letters, and we, you know, have to do the studies and be able to point to what the sources are, but in this case, we know what the sources are. The sources are within our own area.
And, you know, I agree that this is a complex problem, and we're certainly not going to solve it tonight, but, and it is complex, because so many homeowners have older systems to start with, won't even qualify for these controllers, and the cost of implementing them for those homeowners will be potentially very substantial. But the thing is, it's the actions of the homeowners that are at the source of the problem here. And it seems to me that any solution that we consider here has to have a contribution from the homeowners involved with it, because, in fact, whether they know it or not, whether it's intentional or not, they are the source of the problem. We are, I'm a homeowner, we are. And it seems to me that there has to be a contribution from that constituency toward the solution.
With that being said, I would encourage you to contact the Irvine Company and maybe a letter from the city attorney's office, because if the controllers are truly costing $500 to $600, I don't know how many homes they have left, but assuming that there ever would be some type of a lawsuit here, it's going to cost them that much in legal fees just to answer the complaint, and they could probably be a good corporate citizen and try and incorporate this into some of their building guidelines with at least the lots that they're remaining to sell, or, you know, that they would have some control over.
There is another legislative entity that is between us and the resident, and that's Irvine Ranch Water District. They set rules and regulations related to connection to their systems, and they could very easily, I think, pass the same ordinances that we could pass requiring it on our system. As a matter of fact, we probably might not be able to require it on Irvine Ranch Water District connections. But have we asked them to require these type of controllers before they allow a connection to their system?
Something we can ask. We have been talking to some of the developers in Newport Coast, and the developer for the Phase III Crystal Cove development, Lang, has agreed to install the smart timer controllers in that development. So, I think we are kind of following up on your suggestion. We're going to try to reach out to the Irvine Company as well as the remaining developers and see if we can informally work with them, as well as start educating the owners that are actually putting in their irrigation and landscaping themselves, so let them know that, "Do it right now," or be in a situation a few years down the line where you have to do some kind of retrofit. So, I think we're following those lines right now. I agree, it is a citywide problem, so my hope is if we can do something successful here in Newport Coast, it'll be a model for other portions of the city. Certainly in Public Works, we're aware of what it means to the street subgrids when you over-irrigate, or to slope failures, or to people's garages and sellers being flooded because there's too much water that's exfiltrating out next to their house. So, I do agree, it's a citywide problem.
Bob, I know you've done some outreach to some of the HOAs, Cameo Shores, and so on, and I think what would be good is to have some type of a stakeholders group, you know, and I talked to Dave earlier today, and he thought that might be helpful as well.
Sounds good. Some of the additional things that we're following up on, I think echo some of the points you made. We are applying for additional grant funds to see if we can expand this program. We are talking to Rogers Gardens. They're going to be revamping their landscaping along San Juan Key Hills Road and San Miguel with these water-thrifty native-type plants that'll look ornamental using the proper irrigation. So, we're going to try to team with them to use this as a place where we can send the homeowners, to show them what a good-looking landscape looks like that doesn't use a ton of water. I think this would be a great partnership. We're making the rounds with the HOAs, we're kind of educating them little by little, and actually, they've been very responsive. So, I think that what we're trying to do is, you know, get the 95% buy-in, and once people have started to implement this, then the holdouts will also want to come along without any draconian measures. I mean, that's our hope. The irrigation and landscape ordinance, we've been developing a draft with a subcommittee made up of seven departments, and we have now a draft Dry Weather Runoff Reduction Ordinance for the coastal canyons, as well as a Landscape and Irrigation Guidance Manual, which is a user's manual. It's very friendly. It talks about, you know, irrigation design, equipment selection, insulation and maintenance, as well as plant selection, design, insulation and maintenance. Gives them some good tips on how they can actually put a garden together that makes sense for the Newport Coast area. The, this guidance manual and the ordinance are made to work together. This committee, we put this flow chart together because there's so many entities involved, but we envisioned that perhaps we can condition the building permits for new homes and for major remodels such that the irrigation and landscaping goals that we're trying to achieve are part of the building permit process. So, someone comes in, and they submit their plans to the building department, these get submitted to the different departments. The landscaping and irrigation goes to General Services, who may hire a consultant to review the plans to make sure they're up to snuff, and then the permit is conditioned accordingly. And the way the ordinance would work is that potentially our code enforcement people would be making inspections, they would go out to people that are clearly have, you know, malfunctioning irrigation systems, talk to them, if necessary, issue a citation, and require them to come in with a plan that would again be submitted to the building department for the remediation. So, I'll leave this up, this is kind of my final slide. Thank you for your attention, I'll be glad to receive any further comments.
But Bob, don't we think that there are a lot of people that do backyard projects without coming in and getting permits?
We thought our major target initially would be new homes and major remodels. I think that if we're talking about the minor landscaping remodeling, I think the education approach is probably our best, you know...
I don't think irrigation systems for landscaping require a building permit at the present time.
Yeah, I don't believe they do. And I think, as Bob said, the idea is to try to capture the new homes or the major remodels that are all going to be including that as well, and put that into our package as a requirement, kind of like what we're doing with larger construction projects with water quality plans and such, so, kind of...
What's your basic remodel?
Your basic tear-down, except for one wall-type major remodel, which everybody seems to be doing, but I think there's a lot of that activity going on in the city, and I think at some point in time, and I think that's part of the thing that we have to identify, when does this ordinance get triggered if we indeed do an ordinance?
Because there's examples of people just remodeling the structure, but, you know, they could have spent hundreds of thousands on hardscape and landscaping, other landscaping.
That's what I was going to say, sometimes there are permits, though, there may not be just with an irrigation, but with a major landscaping, walls, pools, or whatever else that might go in. They may even need a building permit, or even like an electrical or a plumbing permit, depending upon how that connects. Now, whether they come and get one or not, it's a different thing.
I have a question. Just in terms of the source of the problem, there is the issue of overwatering on the one hand, and then, on the other hand, the type of landscaping and landscaping design. Do you have a feeling for what's the biggest contributor to the problem? Is it landscape design and plant selection, or is it overwatering? I mean, is there any feeling for that?
We're kind of taking our tip from the fire department, who's put together this fuel modification program for Newport Coast, and they've delineated a list of plants that are appropriate for this area, as well as ones that are not as susceptible to promoting fires. So, we're kind of bouncing off that initial thinking to develop this plant palette that we think is appropriate, and with General Services, we've actually identified plants that are good for the top of the slope, for the foot of the slope, for backyards, and so we have recommendations for plants, for trees, for screening. So, we think it's actually both, that you want to propose using these water-thrifty plants that are native-species-like, but have an ornamental value, and then use this high-tech irrigation controller along with these new kinds of sprinkler nozzles, which can actually deliver precise flows to the areas you want to. I think that these are, you know, relatively obvious things that can be done, and I think that that's what we're going to try to promote.
Okay, but the point of my question is, where's the bang for the buck? It seems to me that if half the problem is roughly attributable to overwatering and spending $500 on a controller can eliminate that, there's a lot of bang for the buck there. Encouraging people or even requiring them to redo landscape systems is a whole nother animal. I mean, that's, now we're talking lots of money.
You're correct. So, the biggest bang for the buck is...
And where do we get the bang for the buck?
Is the controllers and making sure you have a properly functioning irrigation system. If we can get people over time to convert to a more logical landscaping palette, then there'll be further benefits.
Bob, are we walking the talk in Newport Coast? Is all the stuff that we, that the city has up there that we landscape and irrigate, are we following these practices?
I know the General Services here, and I'm not an expert on what they have in the public areas, so maybe this is a good transition.
It seems like we're going to be promoting this, that we ought to be out in front of it.
Well, I think the association up there, they were considering for their common areas, some of the fields doing this, the smart controller.
Isn't there some stuff that we maintain, though, by the association?
I don't know.
We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on a computer system for the landscape control of our medians, I'm not hundreds of thousands, but at least $100,000, didn't we?
We have, and that actually is the second part of this presentation.
Okay.
Well, I know it's late, we'll move through it relatively quickly. I'm Mike Pizzani, I'm the Deputy General Services Director. With me is Dan Savino, the Park Superintendent, Randy Kearns, the Park Supervisor, and the gentleman in the black shirt is Tom Diaz, who's the city's irrigation technician, who can answer any questions I can't. What I'll talk about, I'll explain what the city's done in that area, how, you know, we're being good neighbors to reach these goals, and explain a little bit how our large-scale system is different than the homeowners' ones that Bob talked about. We began our implementation when Bob, excuse me, when Benita Canyon Sports Park came online in 2001. Prior to that, we knew the system was going to be coming in the future, and when we had major projects such as MacArthur, medians, we specified irrigation controllers that later on could be adapted to centralized controls. Some of the benefits, similar to what Bob talked about, water conservation, reducing runoff, cost savings. The City Parks Division spends $580,000 a year in water, so if we can save, you know, 20, 30% of our water bill, that's substantial savings. Additionally, public safety, not having water runoff in the streets, plant health, identifying problems proactively, so the Little League coach doesn't get there at 7:00 on a Saturday morning and see a field like that. And additionally, it allows city staff to change irrigation timing for seasonal changes at a computer in an office much more quickly than going park-to-park, controller-tocontroller, and adjusting each station from 7 minutes to 4 minutes. There's significant savings in that. The way the system works, similar to the homeowner system, ours is based on a weather system, too. However, we're not using a area-wide weather report. The city has two weather stations that are in service right now, one at Bob Henry Park and one at Benita Canyon Sports Park. Later on this year, we'll be adding two more weather stations, one at CDM, Main Beach, once we've finished all the landscaping there. And then also, there will be one installed at the Newport Coast Community Center. That way, we can measure the microclimates, because obviously, on the beach and in Balboa, the weather is different than it is at Bob Henry Park, Benita Canyon Sports Park, or up in Newport Coast. Weather station reports to a central computer in the city yard, which polls and communicates with individual satellite controllers. Satellite's a little bit of a misnomer, it doesn't go through satellites, however, it is done via radio waves. The city has its own radio frequency, it has radio repeaters at both the utilities yard and a building in Newport Center that we lease antenna space from the Irvine Company. Satellite controller, which we have 253, I believe, in the city, they communicate with each individual station in a park. A controller in some areas of the city may only have six irrigation stations, other places may have as many as 48, that it turns individual valves on and off. The valves report back to the satellite controller after it's run its cycle, telling it that, A, it went on, or N, went off, as it should. If it doesn't go on, nor doesn't turn off when it should, it sends a signal to the satellite controller, which in turn sends a signal to the computer that there's a problem. Various components, the weather station measures wind, rain, temperature, solar radiation, humidity. It will stop, tell the controllers not to turn on the irrigation, times like last week when it was windy. The computers use to adjust the individual stations, and it doesn't allow the adjustment at the individual controllers out in the field. That's important for the city. Roughly 60% of our parks acreage is maintained under contract, and the contractors have to report to us when irrigation changes need to be made. It allows greater control for the city's systems throughout the city. The satellite controller processes alarms, provides information to the computer. The flow sensor is on the main lines, and it detects when too much or too little water flow is running during the irrigation cycle. For example, if the valve is programmed to run 60 gallons a minute, and it sees that 150 gallons a minute are running through there, it'll detect that there's a broken sprinkler head, and shut it down completely. Master valve also opens and starts a watering cycle and shuts down it at the end. So, if someone was to, a line was to break before a valve, it wouldn't flood or cause a problem. One of the things you notice in large parks such as Benita Canyon Sports Park is, say, the mid-park where it's not, it's more native, you can have irrigation leaks and down in a mini canyon, and you may not notice it until there's some erosion later on. This map points at the city sites that have the controller systems, predominantly on the east side of town. The next slide will point to the areas that still are not centralized, so we're working through as funding allows. There's a slide showing, you know, about the ones that we have changed.
So, Mike, are most of the red lines medians, then?
Yeah, most are medians. Yeah, most are medians. The larger patches are parks. The one up in the, kind of center there is like East Left Park, it's still manual.
It's not getting enough water up there.
The cost savings, we found that the industry number of 20 to 30, just much as 40% is true. An example, Enson View Park, towards the end of 2005, we changed it out to an automated controller, and looking at just the water bills, we saved 426,000 gallons of water in a calendar year. Water costs per acre, in general, it's about $1,500 per acre per year, without a central system. With it, it's about 1,200. We have 203 acres that we have.
Why does the cost only go down 20% when we're using a third less water?
That's, the minimum they advertise is 20%. Some of the other parks are closer to 20 to 25%. So, that's kind of our conservative estimate. And Enson View Park was a, you know-
But I'm saying, it says with the central system, we're paying $1,200 now?
Yeah.
And without the central system, we were paying 1,500?
Right.
So, it went down 20%? But you're saying we're using a third less water, so why did it go down?
Well, just in general, 20% is the minimum advertised savings.
Okay, so that's not an actual number?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Our current savings is about $60,000 a year.
Is that estimated or actual?
That's estimated. It's a little difficult to quantify, because different parks come on year after year after year. The next slide will show the progress of how we-
As a, as a point of reference, how, how many gallons does an average household use in a year?
No one from utilities is here. Okay, there you go, 125,000 gallons. We funded the program, we're currently in year five of a 10-year program. Had CIP amounts, $45,000 per year. On the parks, facilities, medians, and roadside section, we're converting about 40 acres per year, and we're halfway through the non-Newport Coast areas. Newport Coast, we're in year three of a five-year program. We have a CIP budget for $40,000 per year. Excuse me, the five-year program will only convert 40% of the controllers up there. Part of the problem, there are a lot more smaller controllers, six-station controllers on different medians, spread throughout. Part of it because some of the median areas are divided between the city and HOA and master association. It's kind of a mix of who maintains what up in that area.
How much will it cost to convert 100%? Or how much more, I guess?
Roughly, doing the math, 200, about a quarter million dollars for the non-Newport Coast parks areas, and probably, it looks like about another 125,000 to 150,000 to Newport Coast.
And what are you estimating our savings are going to be per year at the end of the day?
120,000 a year.
After everything has been done?
Correct.
And I'm sorry, what did you say? How much was it going to cost us?
Roughly $400,000.
So, it's about a three- to four-year payback?
Right.
So, is there a reason why we're just not accelerating the program? I mean, is it a staffing manpower issue, or is it funding issue?
Somewhat. I mean, we have to, you know, purchase these and change them out. Slightly labor-intensive. But frankly-
Is the city doing it, or hiring contractors to do it?
For the most part, we're doing it with city staff.
Okay.
One of the things, and I'll take part of the blame, I've been here a while, we haven't done a real good job of advertising this program. I mean, this is the first time, as far as I know, we've come up in front of the city council and explained what we're doing and why we're doing it. We started doing it as cost savings and to modern, modernize the irrigation system in the city. And, you know, we, we started rather conservatively. Say we want $40,000, and Mr. Webb, Mr. Batum gave us that much each year. And, you know, we kind of moved along and did so many controllers each year, and moved on, because we've done 120 controllers in, you know, basically five years now. So, one of the things we are doing is our CIP request for fiscal year 2008, for this program, for both Newport Coast and for elsewhere in the city, will increase somewhat, and we'll see how Mr. Batum thinks it's a high enough priority.
Are the cost estimates, are those being provided by the vendor? In terms of, you know, the less water used and so on?
The overall estimates of what kind of the system can do, we're checking with actual, like the Enson View Park example, that was 31%. I mean, it could be more. I mean, we could, you know, go through and dig through water billing records and, and see. Haven't done that so far. You know, one of the things it's allowed us to do, as we do more of these automated controllers, you know, we've picked up parks area, and actually, our water budget has remained relatively stable, not completely stable, but it hasn't grown as much as the acreage has.
And since my name's been brought up in the funding issue here, if I could chime in, Mr. Mayor, one of the, you know, just to give you a little background, this process started, the 45,000 a year is actually funded through our water budget, and essentially because it's a, it's a water savings program. And I think when this program was first created, it was thought not to put extreme stress on the water fund at that time. Certainly, if, if the council's direction, we could, if we want to accelerate this program, we certainly can do that, but be reminded that it does come out of the water fund and it doesn't, you know, it does affect the rate and how we calculate our, our capital improvements and our capital replacements in the water budget. So, I think that's the reasoning behind metering it out, as well as, obviously, staff can't change everything out all at once without dropping everything else that we do. So, it was kind of one of those things where as, essentially, as equipment does wear out, certainly, there are some, I mean, you know, besides the fact that they do not, they're not water-conserving kind of systems, they do function fairly well. And so, the idea was as they wear out was to change them out, so. But if it's council's desire to accelerate that, we certainly can look at that.
Well, certainly, and I won't speak for everybody, but for myself, if there's a way to accelerate the, I mean, clearly, there's a savings, and there's no point in literally pouring money down the drain.
Right.
And so, you know, if there's a savings and we can get it done quicker, great. I mean, maybe it'll cost more to have contractors to come in to do it, as opposed to the staff doing it as they, you know, have time, and maybe that would make it less of a savings or less economical. I don't know, that's something for you guys to work out. But certainly, it's, I'm sure all of us are interested in saving money.
I guess, I guess what I'd like to see is a more refined estimate of what the cost would be to accelerate the program and a more carefully calculated payback. If at the end of the day, we see a payback of three to four years, we ought to be real excited about accelerating the program. That's a very fast payback on something like this.
And additionally, one further note on the water fund, funding our project, out of the $580,000, the city's, of our water budget, about 130 of it is written in checks to Irvine Ranch Water District for, you know, Newport Coast, Benita Canyon Sports Park, for Bayview Park. The remaining 450,000 is a direct general fund transfer out of our budget into the water fund to, you know, fund the water. So, we're, we are paying the water fund for the water we use.
One of the things that's going to be coming up before, too terribly long, is an increase in water rates. And we need to really look at how we allocate expenditures in the water fund and how we're going to, how much, how much of a rate increase we're going to have. The rate increase is primarily caused by the increase in water costs through the Metropolitan Water District and other agencies that are selling water to us, the Orange County Water District, management of the groundwater basin is modifying the charges that we are charged for pumping water out of the ground. And so that, we haven't had a significant water increase in probably seven or eight years, and-
Don, didn't we, didn't we raise the water about a year ago? I thought we-
We did have an adjustment, but it was not anywhere near what it needs to be in order to make up for the increases in water costs.
Oh, yeah, I thought we had a pretty significant bump in that.
And I think we're looking at studying a tiered system as well.
Well, we talked about it at the time, that, and again, I would encourage our councilwoman on the end there, at her meetings of coastal big water quality, because we did take that up, I know, at least a year ago when I was on the committee, and it didn't seem to really go anywhere.
It's part of our general plan now, is to consider it, so.
Okay, well, there you go.
I was just cautioning is that when we, we start just saying, well, let's go ahead and, and chip in X, X more dollars on the water fund, that, that the water fund is rate-related as far as the amount we charge our customers, and the more we charge that fund, the more we charge our customers. So that if we can justify those increased costs, cost above and beyond what is going to be charged to us from our purveyors, then we should consider something like this. But it's, it's not as simple, let's just go out and spend the money.
Well, I also don't think it's a matter simply of money either, because the whole genesis of this discussion has been stopping runoff, reducing runoff, and so that would be an aspect of it as well.
Okay, we'll take a look at it and see what is reasonable in terms of what we can do and look at the cost-benefit payback.
Especially since we're developing our new budget, I think, as we speak, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is that the end of that presentation?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Dave, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Homer, can you remind me how soon you want to go into closed session, 5:30 or?
You know, hopefully, 25, 30 minutes.
Dave, what does your button say?
Yeah, thank you for reminding me, Mr. Webb. I, I lost a bet. So, this is from some folks involved in the Back Bay Science Center, who are very proud of the science center. They would come and use it all the way from Placentia, California. They're from Valencia High School, and I'm supposed to wear their blinking button for at least 10 seconds, so I think I'm done. Thank you for accommodating that. Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a discussion about how you transmitted across the community to the public at home, including on the web, and I titled it Council Unplugged, because that's kind of what may go on, but, and I have some options for you at the end. Why we're here, Time Warner Cable, who is a new cable provider that took over from Adelphia, has told us in late November that they will no longer provide in our council crews, including cameras, truck, edit bay, to cable cast, and the staff, to cable cast the council meetings. What we'll cover here is a quick overview of cable, reminding you about the two carriers we have, reminding you about some recent litigation settlement with Time Warner Cable, and a recent franchise agreement with Cox, how the so-called PEG programming, otherwise known as public education and government programming, works today, dollars and what makes sense for options for you, and then we'll go through some questions. So, quickly on cable 101, reminding you that we have two cable companies that serve customers. Time Warner has about 2/3 of the community, Cox Communications has about 1/3. And this question always comes up, are these monopolies? Well, legally, they're not. The franchises are non-exclusive. Any cable company could come in, build a system, and try to provide service to every household in Newport Beach, or to any one household in Newport Beach. But remember that the cable companies own the stuff in the ground, so that ownership is indeed a big barrier to entry, because there isn't an existing subscriber base to support those capital expenditures needed to build a parallel cable system. It just doesn't happen in modern times. We don't see companies coming in directly competing for, side-by-side on house-by-house. There is, of course, over-the-air cable coming in, and AT&amp;T is discussing coming in over your phone line with cable. We have a different legal relationship with those two companies. With Time Warner, we have an MOU that we entered into, it came to your council in 2006, that binds Time Warner to do a set amount of things for 10 years. They provided a one-time capital grant of 476,000, and an ongoing programming support grant for PEG, which is about 50 cents per subscriber per month, or about 100,000 a year. Cox Communications is different. It has a franchise agreement with us that was entered into in 2006 as well. And instead of doing the ongoing PEG support amount, they agreed to two capital grants, 666,000 now, sorry, 660,000 now, and another $30 per new subscriber in 2010. So, in 2010, we'd go and look and see what the change was, and Cox would pay us that difference. Any questions about this slide specifically? Okay. There is a changing regulatory environment out there. We had a telecommunications act of 96, which said that there is effective competition in places like Southern California, so there's no more regulation of rates by cities. You often get that by your, from your constituents. We can't tell cable companies what rates they can set. We can complain, but it's just like any other citizen or business complaining. We don't have the ability to regulate those. And last year, the legislature passed a bill for statewide franchising for cable TV, and this was mainly sponsored by AT&amp;T and Verizon, opposed by many cities, which said that a cable, a company like AT&amp;T or Verizon could come in and get a statewide franchise authorizing them to construct a system virtually anywhere in the state. It has some PEG requirements, but the main concern of cities was that it didn't have the same PEG obligations that local franchising authorities had.
As I understand, Dave, that's AT&amp;T and Verizon as the landline companies?
Yes.
And then they'd be using their existing landline networks?
Right, their phone lines, yeah. There was an FCC decision at the end of last year, around Christmas time, actually, that adopted a scheme for federal franchising. So, and that was actually brought forth by the AT&amp;Ts and Bell's, the smaller Bell of the, of the nation, to fashion a franchising approach that actually went around some of the ones going into Congress. So, it's going to be interesting to see what Congress does with that recent FCC decision. So, how our program, how does our programming work? Well, the G in PEG, the government of PEG, works this way. Time Warner provides the cameras, the equipment, and the truck, and the crews at no cost to the city. We send that off on a, with phone signal codes to allow this feed to go live from our truck, which is behind the council chambers, sorry, Time Warner's truck, to Anaheim, plays out live on Channel 3, then it goes to the Cox side, and Cox receives a signal simultaneously and plays it on government Channel 30 on the Cox side, and then there are those replays, which you folks know about. We also have community programming. There are nine city-produced shows. We tape using our camera equipment, much less elaborate than this, these cameras, and freelance tapers. Merrill Jackson and the freelancers produce and edit it. We make it out of DVDs for playback on Channel 3, and Cox receives the same signal. As you know, we also put some on the city's website for 24/7 viewing by those who don't have cable. And then we will also borrow or purchase programming from other city productions, like cooking, opera, vehicle restoration, health and exercise, and water issues. We, we market one of our programs, water-wise, region-wide. There's educational programming as well on Time Warner's side. Newport Mesa provides the finished tapes for replay. Cox has Newport Mesa on a tape-delayed basis, but only if it's on a playback system. And on the Cox side, they have an educational channel, but it's run by saddleback. Just a reminder too, in public access, we don't see a lot of public access in Newport. The studio that you would use if you were doing your own programming is in Rancho Santa Margarita at Cox. Cox would help edit with you, or you could edit at home, and they provide the signal on Channel 31 during designated times, and Time Warner uses the last hour of its schedule for public access shows. So, just reminding you and getting to some conclusions here, the dollars are, we have about $1.1 million in the bank from Cox and Time Warner as a result of the litigation and the franchise agreement for- and the franchise agreement for, actually it's for virtually anything the council wants to do. The council, the cable companies have said they would like and expect it to go for community programming and equipment, but there are no strings attached to that. We have about $100,000 a year coming in from, for 10 years from Time Warner, regardless of what happens to statewide or national franchising. And then the news is that there is no more direct PEG support from Time Warner. We've got them to extend it until the end of February. So in other words, these cameras and the crews will go away unless we, in effect, do one of three options at the end. Time Warner has allocated us Channel 3 for a full-time basis. And Cox, they will make Channel 30, 31, and 39 available to us as we need them. And just as a reminder, the city collects a franchise fee of 5%, which is about $1.4 million per year for both companies. So what should we do? There's a couple of options. One is to go back to Time Warner and see what they charge us to continue to provide this service. We would cost it out on our own too and see what makes sense from that comparison and consider entering into a contract with Time Warner to continue doing the work. Another option would be to go with another contractor entirely, rent or purchase used cameras, hire those freelancers on an hourly basis. We'd probably need to improve some editing equipment in the back of the council chambers. That would allow us to save most of the capital money for a new control room and robotic cameras, if you chose to use it for that, when a new city hall decision is made. And then we would use some of that roughly $100,000 a year to pay for the freelancers, the production specialists, the supply costs.
Was this service part of the agreement that we had with Adelphia? Was it part of their contract?
No, it was not a part of any written contract.
So they just did it gratis?
Right, they did. Well, I think it was, Mary Lee and I researched that because Mary Lee believes it was. So we went back and looked at the documents and there's nothing in writing. I believe it was probably a handshake at some point in time where they said they do this and they just continued to do it, at least Adelphia did.
So is that why we didn't negotiate it in the new contract with Time Warner? We just assumed it was going to be there or what?
No, we didn't assume it was going to be there. What, our posture through, at that time, the telecom committee and staff was that this was a service that was going away for a variety of reasons, including statewide franchising. So we requested instead the money with the option to do what we wanted with that money rather than actually asking for the service to continue.
Okay, so it was a conscious decision in our part?
It was.
Well, I think too, I spoke with one of the executives at Time Warner yesterday and apparently the cable company, they want to get out from underneath the PEG.
They do, right. They consider this something that the locality can do better and they would rather focus on just delivery of stations and customer service.
One of the things I did mention though that we might want to consider partnering with them on is, on our website, as you mentioned, we have 24/7 programming. And one of the things the cable companies are offering is video on demand. Same thing, you just watch it through your television. So all the council meetings and the community program could be available on video on demand as you watch television.
It'd be a nice service.
Now, the catch is, we have an analog channel, so we would need to get a digital channel from them to do that. And then they indicated they'd be interested in bargaining, in negotiating for that.
Okay. As I understand it, the digital channels are a little bit easier to get from them. They consider the lower number of the analog channels more valuable, so that may be something to do. Finally, the, and the third option would be to talk about purchasing the new equipment and actually installing it. Most of the equipment is mobile, so you could do a significant investment now and take the stuff out and move with you to either the, a new city hall or not a new city hall. But we do think that if we went that way, we'd have to cost out whether it made sense to actually have a production specialist come onboard. Either, the obviously decision would be contract that person or have that person as a new staff member. I would be remiss if I didn't put forth Mary Lee's point that she, she really believes that the quality of our programming suffers if we don't have a reliable production specialist, someone who can help her. She has a backup of some community programming that I think is valuable to the community. I think the community would reinforce that. But without having a loyal person doing that on a regular basis, it's difficult. Because right now, we do it with people and they can squeeze it into their hourly schedule. So I think, I discussed this with Homer a little bit, if we would make a recommendation to you, it would be this one, to go back to Time Warner, at least for a period of time, and see what they would charge us to continue to provide this service. What they would do is they deduct it from that payment, that roughly $8,500 a month. Time Warner at one point said, it's going to cost you the entire $8,500 for that month. That seems a little high for two meetings. So we're going to try to sharpen our pencils and get a better cost from them and then bring some other alternatives back to you in a nighttime session.
Can we negotiate better if we agree to shorter meetings?
I bet you could, yeah. It's all hourly.
Just so you remember, the $8,500 is based upon getting $100,000 a year, so that would be a monthly, basically what we get each month from the franchise agreement.
So, Mr. Mayor, that's my presentation. If you had questions or comments, I certainly would appreciate some direction from you if you felt so inclined.
Open it up.
Sounds to me like you're going about it the right way.
Okay.
I would agree.
I guess my feeling is that if we, you know, we're still unsettled about city hall making a significant investment, I imagine this equipment is not cheap to buy robotic cameras and editing bays and things like that. And the expertise would have to be brought on to decide what system is best and what equipment is best. And I imagine that, you know, that's going to be a process that's going to take six weeks and we'll be without cameras. So at that point, I'd say we probably need to try and continue the service as they're providing it, you know, to the extent that we can save money, you know, not paying them the whole $8,500. Certainly that would be our goal.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes.
Anybody here from the public that'd like to make a comment? Come on down. Please state your name for the record.
My name's Gordon Glass. I live in the Bluffs. And this is not a non-agenda item, it's agenda item number three, what we, what we were just talking about. When Adelphia was taking over from Comcast a few years ago, a lot of us, of course, were wondering what was going to happen and were they going to put the screws on us again and charge us more for less and the usual things. I came over and talked to a couple of folks in city hall about whatever control we had over the process. And then we had even more than we do now, as was just mentioned. One suggestion that I had, and it was when one or both of those companies were in the process of upgrading their lines, and they were doing a lot of digging, a lot of new cables and fiber optics and all those fancy things. My suggestion was that if there's some way the city could write into our agreements with a cable company or cable companies, that every time they dug a ditch and put their cable in, we would be allowed to drop our cable in next to it at no cost to us. We'd buy the cable, of course, but they'd dig the ditch. Over time, that means that even though that cable was not used at the time, it was an implied threat and a bit of control over them. I don't know if that's worthwhile doing now if Time Warner is going to be doing any digging and upgrading as time goes by. It certainly would be worthwhile if another franchisee was interested in coming in. So I don't know how that could be put into effect, but at least it would be a means of implied threat and control that might get them to deal with this in a little more neutral manner. The other thing that might happen with the loss of the present Channel 3 arrangement, I personally, my wife and I are not television nuts. We watch news, we watch football games, the Rose Parade and the Olympics, and that's about it. But we do read three newspapers a day, The Times, The Register, and The Pilot, actually two and a half. But the one-half one is very important for anybody that's interested in what's going on in their own city. The other thing that is very important is the televised meetings of the council. And I'm sure that you realize that there probably are 10 times as many people watching on television as show up here, even on a controversial evening. The newspapers are the only way to find out what's really going on, other than that Channel 3. And not many people are reading newspapers these days, fewer and fewer it seems. So I think it really would be worthwhile to try to do anything you can and can afford to maintain that programming. One possible way to save money on personnel would be to, if there's any way to partner with Orange Coast College District or UCI or whoever, that might have a media communications school or classes or whatever, and make it part of a school program. So anything you can do would be greatly appreciated by all of us that have an interest in what's going on in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Anybody else? Okay. We're adjourned. To close session.
If a teenager, for instance, is on anabolic steroids or steroid supplements, some of the ones that are testosterone-related derivatives, you can definitely see a worsening of regular acne. Or a telltale sign is that there's just an outpouring of acne where all the pimples are in the same state. You know, you have, you know, 100 lesions, they're all looking about the same age, then that, that's a sign of that. And that shows you that there are many ways in which those illicit steroids complicate the health. But clearly, they have strong hormonal effects and can make the acne pretty horrific.
Once they're past the period where they have the active acne, they may have scarring or changes on their face. There are options.
There are, absolutely. Though, my general rule with acne is that the most important thing is to recognize that it's way easier for us to prevent scarring than it is to fix it when it's there. If you have deep-pitted scars, you're talking surgical revision, okay? You either-
You'd rather get a kid while they have the active acne going on that they're having trouble fixing than waiting till it's after all?
Absolutely, because it's much easier to control the acne and prevent new scarring and settle down the stuff that's already occurred than it is to wait till it burns out. Generally, you're going to have a much less satisfied teenager and/or adult.
All right, now I opened with this, I have to ask it.
Okay.
To pop or not to pop?
Ah, general rule is don't pop, okay? Because the reason why we worry about people manipulating the acne is that when you think that you're getting material outward, you're actually pushing a lot of the material down into the skin. And realize that what you don't-